I call this Tuesday, January 8, 2019, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business will be swearing in of the two council members and mayor. Prior to doing that, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for coming. Our typical council meetings are not this -- well, sometimes, but usually not this filled with people. And so usually if it is this filled, they're not happy. So thank you for being here. So true. So thank you for being here tonight and having smiles on your faces. So council member Freiberg, Nelson, and I will walk down. I'll be sworn in first. If you all want to be ready to go second, that'd be great.
I feel very honored that Ron asked me to swear him in as my successor as mayor. Ron has been a great friend for many, many years. There's not too many people for whom I would pay the $120 to become a notary, go to the Hennepin County Service Center, wait in line for two and a half hours to register it, and then buy the stamp. But for Ron, I will do that.
You owe 'em now.
I think you can make money off that.
Yeah, $5 a time. I'll send you your check. Okay? All right. I, Ron Case.
I, Ron Case.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of mayor of the city of Eden Prairie.
Of the office of mayor of the city of Eden Prairie.
In the county of Hennepin.
In the county of Hennepin.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
lot of them. Congratulations, Kathy. Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Kathy Nelson.
I, Kathy Nelson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Of the city of Eden Prairie.
Of the city of Eden Prairie.
In the county of Hennepin.
In the county of Hennepin.
And state of Minnesota.
And state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Again, congratulations. You don't have to be in the line. Gather around him. Hold him up. Okay. If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Mark Freiberg.
I, Mark Freiberg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Of the city of Eden Prairie.
The city of Eden Prairie.
In the county of Hennepin and state of Minnesota.
In the county of Hennepin and state of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Again, congratulations.
Thank you for being part of this. I love Eden Prairie history, as most of you know, many of you know, and it's my knowledge and recollection that no mayor has ever been sworn in by the former mayor. I wanted to do that, and I really appreciate Nancy being willing to do that, because I think in this day and age, the opportunity to show continuity of government is rare, and I just thought that would be really powerful. So Nancy, thank you. You've been a great mentor for me through the years, and I hope to follow in your footsteps and make you proud. I also want to welcome council members Mark Freiberg and Kathy Nelson, and joining Brad Aho, and we will discuss tonight filling in my replacement as a fifth person. But I'm excited. We have what I believe is a very strong council that will represent well the people of Eden Prairie, but it also joins an amazingly strong staff under our city manager, Rick Getcho, and the people sitting up here to his left. So I think that, yes, were somebody going to clap there? You can. I don't know. Let's do it. We hear that all the time, and those of us on the campaign trail this last fall heard a lot how happy people were with the services here in Eden Prairie. So it's, Mr. Getcho, it's to your credit and the staff that you hire. I did not, I was remiss, as it was pointed out to me, to allow for an open podium sharing time. I will promise to do that at the next meeting. So if you came wanting to speak to us off-camera about any issue that you wanted to, please come back on Tuesday, January 22. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government before each council meeting, and we typically hold these meetings on the first and the third Tuesdays of the month. This month was odd, with January 1st being the first. Open podium is between 6:30 and 6:55. Usually, the first section of it is more of a formal time. If you were to call in, we could have staff ready on your issue, and then we open it up to people wanting to address us on any issue. If you wish to speak to open podium, do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter, so we can be prepared for you. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, I will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. Okay. So we have our first order of business is to open an HRA meeting, and I will call this HR -- for those of you that, and the teacher in me has to explain this briefly, but the HRA is sometimes a separate entity away from the city council, but in Eden Prairie, we actually function as the HRA board as a city council. So it approves specific funding regarding housing. So I'm going to call within the city council meeting. Right now, I'm going to open up the HRA meeting. So I call it to order, and the first order of business is to adopt a resolution approving the decertification.
Roll call.
Oh, roll, do I need a roll call for HRA?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Roll call for HRA.
Councilmember Aho.
I, here.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Case.
Here.
Okay, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, members of the HRA. We have a housekeeping item tonight. It's action to pass a resolution to decertify a tax increment financing district. Tax increment financing district number 18, which is the bluff set in Amel Creek, has come to the end of life, and action is needed by the HRA to decertify the tax financing district.
Great. Any questions about that from council? And if not, someone wished to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt a resolution approving the decertification of tax increment financing district number 18 of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Second.
Any further questions or statements anyone wants to make? I'll have the vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes. Now, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Don't get antsy here. It's just the HRA part of the meeting. I would move to adjourn. Is there a motion to move to adjourn the HRA meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. HRA meeting is adjourned. Now, we move back into the regular city council meeting, and we have two proclamation presentations. Mr. Getcho, do you want to speak to the first one?
I can. Thank you, mayor and council. The city liquor operations partnered with Prop again this year over the holiday season, inviting customers to donate to the food shelf through our liquor operations. So tonight, we have our liquor operations manager, Jaime Urbina, who's going to talk briefly about the, that particular project, and we have a check to present to Prop.
All right. So during the month of November, we partnered with Prop, and we had a Happy Hour for Hunger event where we actually collected 298 pounds of food we helped collect for Prop. And then throughout the month, we did a dollar drive where we helped collect a grand total of $5,019.11. And with, I'm going to assist Ron here to get that to Prop.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Jennifer Loon. I'm vice chair of the board of Prop, and we are very, very grateful for this incredibly generous donation. As you know, Prop is the social service agency and food shelf in Eden Prairie. As we like to say, we provide food, support, and community for our neighbors in need, and this will go a long ways towards that wonderful mission. So thank you very much.
Our second presentation is to accept a donation from Eden Prairie Lions for Staring Lake Outdoor Center Programs. Mr. Getcho, do you want to comment on that?
Mr. Lothammer can cover that.
Your honor, council members, this is pretty much an annual gift from the Lions Club, as well as many others that occur from them throughout the year, and some really good partnerships that we have with the Lions Club and the city and Parks and Recreation Department in specific. So we really appreciate them continuing to think of us and also continuing to think of the outdoor center at Staring Lake. This $400 gift will go to help with some of the program supplies that occur there. We'll continue to teach many, many kids and families about the benefits of outdoors and outdoor education. So we really appreciate that contribution.
Thank you, Mr. Lothammer. Is there a motion to accept this donation?
Move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $400 from the Eden Prairie Lions Club for the Staring Lake Outdoor Center Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. We have no minutes to approve. They will be approved at the January 22 meeting, our December meeting. So moving down to consent calendar, is there a motion to approve? And then we'll ask about any items to question. So is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move to approve items A through U on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions or items that you'd like to temporarily pull?
I just wanted to make a comment on one of the items. Let's see, I'm just looking to find which item it is. So item U, the last item, approve agreements for services with the I-494 Corridor Commission. I just wanted to talk, just address that a little bit. So as you know, I serve as chair of the 494 Corridor Commission, and the treasurer's duties revolve amongst the member cities throughout the, throughout the years, and each city takes a two-year turn in being the treasurer. And really, what they've done is just held, the cities have held the funding for the corridor commission and then provided the checks when the corridor commission said, you know, send the checks, disperse the checks to the vendors and whoever we're making payments to. But it's been, it's been really kind of a problem for the corridor commission, see, since it's such a small organization, to really do all of the accounting. And so we've kind of struggled with a way to, to really handle that and make sure that it's a very transparent way, that it's very sound, and we're, and we're getting audits and things like that, regular audits. And so the decision was made, and our city staff was very kind in offering to, to take that upon, upon, upon the city and handle that for us. And so we, we truly appreciate that, and it's really going to be a good thing for, for the 494 Corridor Commission. So I just wanted to highlight the good work of our, of our city staff for, for being willing to take that on, and it's, it's going to be a great help to us.
Thanks for the clarification. And just for others in the audience who are watching from TV, councilmember Aho, we, different ones of us specialize, I guess, in different areas throughout the years, and councilmember Aho has been, his specialty's been very much transportation, and because of being on commissions which often rotate their chairs, he happens to be this year the chair of both the 494 Corridor Commission and also the Southwest Transit. So our Eden Prairie influence, I think, will be great, and we appreciate your work and service there. All right. We have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Freiberg.
Thank you. I would just like a clarification of something. I wasn't here from the beginning where it has to do with the Preserve Boulevard Improvement Project under O. Now, if I remember right, that's $130,000 expenditure, and I'm wondering if that's just straightforward, this is my own information at this point, consulting services alone, any type of construction involved in that.
Mr. Ellis.
Councilmember Case, or excuse me, Mayor Case, councilmember Freiberg. Yeah, so there are actually three items on tonight's agenda that revolve around the Preserve Boulevard project. The first item is item O, which is a professional services agreement amendment with SRF Engineering, who did our design work. There's some additional work, a lot of it related to watershed district permitting, that we need to have completed before we can begin construction, and so that's what that item addresses. There's also item Q, which is, excuse me, in relation to some consultant services for, excuse me, Eureka Construction. This would be the construction contract. So a total construction award of $6.649,663 million, and that will be the bulk of all the construction that will be awarded tonight. Then there's another item that is in relation to the geotechnical work that will need to be done as a part of the construction as well. So those three items, all related to the Preserve Boulevard project.
Councilmember Freiberg, is that fine?
Being that I was not involved in the beginning, you know, just being appointed, would it be appropriate for me to abstain a vote on this?
We all have answers to that, but why don't we hear right from our attorney?
The short answer is no. It's, there's no need to abstain simply because you weren't part of an original public hearing where it was considered.
Any other questions or comments about the consent calendar? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. We have no public hearings this evening. A payment of claims, were there any items that you wish to question or ask staff more about before we have a motion? So I would entertain a motion to approve the payment of claims as submitted.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any, you guys are competing tonight for not, for not doing second vote. You can jump right in there.
Yeah, I was sort of waiting for you.
Usually, it's the opposite, like, give me a chance to make my second. Any, any comments additional? If not, all those who wish to approve this signify by saying aye.
No, no, no. Roll call.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Brad's helping me tremendously this evening. Roll call vote. We always roll call because these are the money that got expended throughout the last month, and therefore, we are most responsible on your behalf for all the dollars that get spent, so we individually have to say yes to this.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye.
Thank you so much. We do have one ordinance this evening. I'll turn this over to our city manager, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, mayor and councilmembers. We do not have any public hearings tonight. We will have some appointments and some reports, but our one item of business in the ordinance area is a first reading of an ordinance related to individual sewage treatment systems. So there are about 120 individual sewage treatment systems, septic systems, in Eden Prairie. And Hennepin County, throughout all of the cities in Hennepin County, is taking over the regulation and enforcement of these systems countywide. So the city needs to pass an ordinance allowing the county to, actually, we need to have an agreement with the county, and that comes at a future meeting, but we need to pass an ordinance that repeals our regulatory system for the septic system. So that first reading is this evening, and then we would come back at a future council meeting and have a second reading on that ordinance, and then we would also have an agreement with the county. And staff can certainly answer any questions that you have, and this is a pretty straightforward process the county's taking on.
Not that I was multitasking, but I did not pay attention to the final 10 words.
No, it's all right.
But you're looking at me like I need to do something right now.
No, you, no. Well, yeah, you do.
I do.
You do. You want to.
So I need to entertain a motion.
Yes.
And first, let me ask if there's any, councilmembers have questions or concerns or want to comment. Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance repealing Section 10.2 of the city code dealing with individual sewage treatment standards. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Before we move on, I need to go back. I actually was remiss in having us approve our agenda. Not that that's horribly important, except both councilmember Aho and I want to add an item. So let's go back and approve, move to approve the agenda, but first, let me ask, do any councilmembers have any items or would you like to adjust, now that we've been through half of it, the agenda?
I would just like to make, I have some comments under councilmember reports.
I'll let you go first, because we have that more lengthier conversation with councilmember replacement. I have a quick, short one, too. Anybody else?
I have something I'd like to put in under councilmember reports also.
Okay.
Can I bring it up right now?
No, no.
Add councilmember reports.
You could title it if you wish, but you can just say you'll bring up something under councilmember reports.
Okay, let's just title it Housing Advisory Board.
Okay. So with those three additions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now, we'll move back to appointments. And we need, we're doing, just again, for the education of people in the audience, but also at home, typically, at this first meeting, we would assign our, take, the mayor and/or council working together would make assignments where we represent our council and all of our constituents, all of our residents, on various local boards and commissions, like the 494 Corridor Commission that councilmember Aho is on. We're not going to do that this evening, because we want to wait until our fifth chair is filled, and we anticipate that tonight, we'll be able to make that appointment, and that person would take the oath of office on Tuesday, January 22, meaning that we would probably then do boards and those types of committee appointments the first meeting in February. However, there are many things, several things, that we can appoint tonight. One is that we need to appoint the official city newspaper, the city that always advertises on our behalf any of the formal meetings that we have. So is there a motion? It's typically been the Eden Prairie News. That's what the staff is recommending. Is there a motion to make that resolution?
I would move to adopt the resolution designating the Eden Prairie News as the official city newspaper for the year 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any conversation or discussion with that? Okay, hearing none, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Then we need to set the official dates, time and place for the city council meetings across 2019, realizing that they can be changed if there's proper notice, but we're setting the schedule and calendar. We also, during this resolution, appoint what's thought of and known as the acting mayor. And statutorily, the legislature, hundreds some years ago, set it up that if the mayor is out of town, is not able to attend a meeting, that the council appoints a council member at the first meeting of the year to stand in that mayor's place. Historically, traditionally, Eden Prairie, for its 50-some-year history being a city, has appointed the most senior council member to be that acting mayor. And I, my personal preference would be that we would continue that tradition and appoint Brad Aho, but it is truly up to all four of us. So if you are both comfortable with that, and someone would make a motion, it'd be great if the two of you, you're going to have to second this now. Okay? So if the two of you would make the motion, and then the other one second it, because Brad Aho's, he could second it himself, I think it would be cleaner that you all would.
Move to adopt the resolution designating the official meeting dates, time and place for the city of Eden Prairie Council in 2019, and appointing councilmember Brad Aho as acting mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. I'm assuming no discussion, but I don't want to cut you off. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. For the appointments, then, we have one board that we do appoint this evening, because it doesn't involve one of the four of us, and it's the Board of Appeal and Equalization, people that have concerns over their tax assessment number, the amount, they can appeal it to the Board of Appeal and Equalization. These are typically people that we choose that have had experience in real estate, and they understand the market. And so you'll, you'll probably recognize some of these names as people that have been well-known as realtors in our city. So I don't know if any of you want to have more discussion than the staff recommendation. If not, if one of you would like to make the motion and get a second. If not, if one of you would like to make the motion and get a second, we'll proceed.
Should we talk about the names? Should we just announce the names?
It's up to you.
I think, I think it would be good for people to hear it. I mean, we see it in our packet, but I think it would be good to hear, hear the names.
Mr. Getchow? Sure. So the names are in the motion, but as a bit of background, the, the names being proposed, and, and we're, our current members as well, the previous year, Lyndon Mulquist with Edina Realty, Annette O'Connor with Caldwell Banker Burnett Realty, Todd Walker of Caldwell Banker Burnett Realty, Nate Thompson of Edina Realty, and Kristin Rial of Edina Realty. So all these individuals are obviously very active, actively involved in the sale of residential properties in the southwest metro in Eden Prairie.
And they're all repeats?
They are.
Okay. So unless you have further comment to make, if someone wants to make the motion?
I would move to appoint the Board of Appeal and Equalization, Lyndon Mulquist, Annette O'Connor, Todd L. Walker, Nate Thompson, and Kristin Rial, for the period of March 1st, 2019, through May 31st, 2019, or until the Board of Appeal and Equalization completes its work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you. Welcome, and thank you to these people who are willing to take, it doesn't take a lot of time, but it takes a little bit of time, and we really appreciate their involvement and commitment to this. And it really helps out the city tremendously.
And we appreciate their expertise as well.
Totally. Absolutely. Thank you. So the next item is reports of councilmembers, and we have three of them. And so I think I'll just start with councilmember Aho, and we'll go to councilmember Freiber, and I'll, I'll finish that up.
Okay, so I just wanted to give a quick update. I am chair of the Joint Airport and Zoning Board for the, for the Flying Cloud Airport. And so we've been meeting for the past 10 years, on and off. It's been a long process. And what the, what that board does is we, we are trying to codify the zoning around the airport. And the reason for that is because there's some, some areas around the airport that are, that are in safety zones. And so the state and MINDOT is the one that's responsible for this. MINDOT specifies certain safety zones, and there's many different zones. There's Zone A's, Zone B's, Zone C. And those safety zones regulate what can and can't happen in those areas. And so what we'd like to do is allow for some, some building to take place, and it has to be, obviously, the right type of building, the right type of structures, the right height limitations, all those kinds of factors, the number of, the density of people that would use those places. And we want to make it a very safe thing, but we want to allow some building and development to happen. And there's some, there's some really positive things for the city that can take place, as well as for Metropolitan Airport Commissions or the MAC. And so the JASB works with the MAC, and we work with MINDOT to, to effectuate that, those changes. And so I just wanted to report that as of this week, we just met as a body, the Joint Airport Zoning Board met as a body, to approve our, it was called the interim commissioner's order. So Charlie Zelli, the commissioner of MINDOT, has been the commissioner, and he will be, that'll be changing now with the new administration, with Governor Walz coming in, he'll have a new administration. And so we, we wanted to try to get this whole process finalized in, under Charlie Zelli's, Commissioner Zelli's reign, so to speak. And so we got an interim commissioner's order, and it, we've got it finalized. And so now, the, the last bit of the process is, is to take that, take that commissioner's order, and we've got agreement with the Joint Airport Zoning Board, who is made up of our city officials and, and some surrounding cities. And so what we're gonna do is take, take that, and we have to have a public hearing. So the, the next step of the process is, we've approved it, MINDOT now has to give us the official approval of that, then we will take it, if MINDOT approves it, they will take it to the joint, to the public process, a public hearing. That public hearing will take place here in these chambers, and that'll be, I think it's scheduled for February 22nd. Does that sound right, Mr. Getchow? Yes. So February 22nd, here in the chambers, there'll be a little bit of a, kind of a dog and pony show prior to the approval or the vote on it, or the, taking the public comment, just to kind of keep, give, give all the details, so people can get up to speed on what changes are being proposed. And then, and then we'll have public comment. And then if, if that all goes well, then we'd look for final, finalization of that. And then the Joint Airport Zoning Board would have completed its duties after a short 10-year process.
Thank you.
So that's, that's really all I have. But I just wanted to get everyone up to speed on what's going on with the JASB.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for your service on that. And I'm, I'm going to be very careful and guarded in my words how I respond, and please counter to, I mean, I really appreciate your input on this as well. But I just want to level set that, over the last 10 years, I, I feel like we voted on JASB maybe three times. I don't know if that sounds right to you, but each time, I was the, a four, on the one side of a 4-1 vote. And I just want to explain that I do believe, and I agree with councilmember Aho's perception, I think you would say this, that it's good that we're at the table. However, the legislature's given the Metropolitan Airport Commission power to do whatever they want anyway. So I always felt that we should not be at that table, in that we're really just giving MAC cover, and that we should have stayed outside of being part of that process, of which we have no power, and in the end, anyway. And I know there's another side to that. I just wanted to level set that, that there are variances of opinions on that, but the council consistently 4-1 has voted to be part of JASB. So, and thank you for doing what you've done and being the voice at that gathering. And, and again, I've voted not to be there. Anything you want to add to that?
No, I would just say that, you know, that we have, that we have, that we have a good working relationship with the Metropolitan Airport's Commission on this, and MINDOT. And I think it's important that the city stay at that table, so that we can make sure that the changes, any changes that are taking place in regard to properties surrounding the airport, that the city has some, some control over and some input on. And I think if we would've stayed out of that process, then we would've lost our voice. And so I think it's important for us to have a voice in that, to making sure that those changes are something that we, we approve of and, and want to see happen. And so from that perspective, I think it was very important for us to be involved in the process.
And I respect the, the differing opinion very much. Councilmember Freiber.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. During my recent campaign, I had many discussions with people in our community, and recognizing that the housing issue in Eden Prairie is very, very complicated. The affordable housing and how it interacts with the existing housing, while we maintaining the values of our property all the way around, the life cycle housing are critical issues. I have a background of 30 years in the mortgage banking industry and real estate prior to that, and I'm smart enough to know that I certainly don't have all the answers. And I don't think anyone collectively up here, we all have a desire to address these needs, because we want to deal with them as soon as possible, you know, for all concern. And so I made a commitment during my campaign to bring this forth right away, as soon as the election was done. And that is to put together a housing advisory board or commission, either by appointment or ordinance. I've had discussions with Mr. Getchow before on it, as far as just to see if it's realistic. I want to get it into the right cycle right now, since we're gonna be doing the recruiting for the commissions. I want to get input from the community, from the real estate professionals. We want to get, you know, developers that live in Eden Prairie. This is very much something that can bring forth new, fresh ideas for what we're looking for, to help solve this critical problem. And I'm calling upon my colleagues on the city council to support me on this, as far as where we can put together and ask Mr. Getchow and, and the city staff, as far as which way we can put it together as soon as possible, to get it in the same cycle when we're recruiting for the other commissions.
All right, thank you. I'll maybe make a word here of response. Thank you, I think it's a great idea. I think you do get, would get a lot of support up here from all of us. In the context, and I, we haven't had an, as much as I appreciate you bringing up this very first meeting, we haven't had an opportunity yet, as a council, to have a workshop that I'd love to have, to get all of us on a, either Saturday morning or something, or all day Saturday, where we would listen to staff and also be able to present to staff some of our goals and hopes and dreams for what we'd like to accomplish this year. I do like the housing task force concept. I, I personally, and this is why I'm asking if we can put it on hold, not long, but, and I understand your cycle idea, but I think it might work in a different model. But I'm interested in having some type of a task force related to working with the Chamber on Business, especially with the transit-oriented development. I'm interested in re-instituting the Senior Issues Task Force, which was in 96, and I believe 2005. All, and also some type of a task force with diversity. And, and the point would be, and I've tried to characterize it like, those of us that have hit these different mile markers of age 40, 50, 60, 70, they're wonderful times in our personal life to assess, right? We look at where have we been, where are we at, where are we going? Well, 2020 is magical, I think, for that, for cities and states across our country to think about, where are we, where have we been, where are we going to be in 2030? Will we be 30, 35% diverse community in 2030? Will we have an aging population of 20, aging population of 25% or more? Will we be ready for light rail and all the transit-oriented development? And will we have enough affordable housing? So absolutely, I love the idea. I, I think it belongs in a larger conversation, and if you could just be patient, a month or so, until we get our workshop and sit down with staff, I've talked to Mr. Getchow about, there's, there would be quite a commitment onto staff if we were to begin to staff these task forces. So we have a lot of commissions in place now. They might be able to take on some of this, like our HRDC could take on some of my diversity issues. I think the Senior Issues Task Force will be its own. I think housing might be its own. So we're all with you. It's a great idea. Anyone else want to comment, and then I'll maybe throw it over to Mr. Getchow as well?
No, I think it's a great idea. I think we just, I think we do have to work it into the big picture with, with staff levels, because, you know, it does take a fair amount of staff time when, when we dedicate a staff person as a liaison to that, that border commission, to, to deal with that. And so we just have to kind of be a little sensitive to that, but I think we can work it in, and I'm sure it'll be a, be a great, great idea.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes, and we have had the housing task force in the past, but it's been since about that 2005, 2006. It's time to have another one, to say the least. But it doesn't have to go in the commission level, because you can pull people from various commissions and people in the community who are interested in that, onto that task force without doing it next month, and it might have to be in April rather than February. And I know that's how they did it before, because I was on it as a member of the Planning Commission at that point, but it was strictly housing. And it is time to do one again, there's no doubt about it. It's been 12 to 14 years, that's too long.
Mr. Getchow, any comments?
I, I think the conversation that you want to have is exactly what you're having now, to continue that conversation. You have, there's just a spectrum of ways in which you can get input. It could be a standing commission of set-appointed people, that an ordinance is created, and, and there's that piece, a standing meeting, you approve tonight, the meetings and the dates and the times of those commissions that meet monthly, all the way down to, you know, using some of the tools we have to get the opinions of thousands of residents on a single topic. So you have a full spectrum that you could consider what you want to do with these different topics. I would be very concerned about putting an ordinance together that you would approve two readings of and set a commission up between now and the end of February. I don't think that's possible, but a commission can always come at a later date as well.
Councilmember Freiber, does that sound acceptable?
As long as we are firm in our belief that this is gonna happen, this discussion, I prefer a commission, because a commission, the problem of an advisory task force, it's here today, gone tomorrow. It's forgotten. This problem's not gonna go away. And anyone that thinks it is are kidding themselves. This is a very serious problem that we're dealing with. I believe it has to be at a commission level, ordinance. I'm willing to wait to do it right, because once we set it up, I don't want it to go away. I want it to be a very important part of what we're doing going forward. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I, I would, I'm not speaking for the other two here, but I would guess that you have 100% support in all three of us, in the passion that this problem needs to be addressed. So we need to find the right way to address it, and we need to have the time to have the conversation to do that. And I do think it's in the context of three or four other very important, large issues as well. Again, getting back to my 2020 reassessment kind of timeframe. So thank you, thank you for raising it. I just have a real fast one before we move into the council, filling in the council vacancy. All of us, I'm sure, who have been campaigning recently, have knocked on doors that people live on streets that tell us about speeding cars. And the speeding cars, our own police officers will tell you regularly, 99% of the time, it's their neighbors, right? I mean, that's who, we're, we live on our streets, and we're doing the speeding, right? In some cases, it's, oh, those high school kids down the road or something, which probably is unfair for the high school kids down the road, right? But it's that perception that it's some group of people that are speeding all the time. Well, we, I was privileged to attend a convention in LA a month or so ago with the National League of Cities, and they have always an exhibition hall, and you learn just a lot of what's out there in terms of products. But Mr. Getchow and I came across a company called Traffic Logix, L-O-G-I-X. And they, they, they had that classic, typical speed limit sign, your driver, or speed limit digital readout, you're driving down, it says your speed is whatever. The difference, and, and I, and so, Mr. Ellis, I'm speaking to you here, because this is my hope that, you know what, I was supposed to talk to you before this to have you ready, and I forgot, so. You're, you're, you're hearing this cold now. But the, the power that I heard in this demonstration was that this, this box, which could be solar, battery, or connected into AC, had a computer inside it that retained all the information over however long a period you wanted to set it, for a week or whatever. So you go back, plug it into your computer, and it tells you every car, every single car that went through that sign, and exactly the speed and exactly the time. So then you simply go to the police department, say, you know, at 8:35 on, every morning, there's six cars that drive 6.8 miles over, I mean, it's incredible information. And then we can zero in, not, not have a police officer just sit there, right, for 10 hours waiting for the two cars that already drove by at 8:35. And they cost, they weren't a little amount, but they weren't, I mean, they were $3,000 or so, or $3,500. My thought is if our city owned five of them, and all these different streets that we're hearing about all the time, now we've got an answer. When we knock at a door, we'll move one of our portable signs over, we'll gather data for a week. We don't have to, you know, we, we didn't have the capability, I think, before, to process together and then to process that data. Now, these signs would give us that. So I'm, I'm just, not micromanaging, I'm just suggesting that that be looked into. And I don't know how all of you feel, but I thought it was an incredible solution to a problem that we hear all, well, I don't know that we're gonna solve the speeding, but we're going to gather the data and the information to begin to address it. Any thoughts by any of you?
I think I'd like to have them look into it. You know, I do want to know more about the financial costs, and maybe our city attorney even being able to tell us how good it is actually to set up real speed traps, specific to certain cars.
No, I don't think you would target any individuals based on that.
But you know it's six people every morning at such and such a time, there's six individual cars that do that, who's driving, is questioned. I just would like a little more information about the whole topic, but it might be worth going through, but I, I think it's, it needs looking at from a couple of different angles. But it should be looked at.
So, Mr. Getchow, can you just get together with Mr. Ellis? And I guess, really, what we're probably asking is just, can you bring something back to us in terms of information, possibility of look into it and see if it makes sense? Get Mr. Rosso to weigh in, and then...
Yeah, yeah, the police chief.
Mr. Weber to weigh in.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I did talk to Mr. Ellis about this already previously. So we have some of these dynamic signs, but the question is, is these new signs that, that capture this data, something we can look at and get back to you?
Perfect. All right, thank you. So that's it with the reports of councilmembers, with the exception now of the filling the vacancy. So I want to just say for a moment, just to explain that when I ran for mayor, I was in the middle of a four-year term. So when I took the oath of office tonight, I vacated. So when I took the oath of office tonight, I vacated the council seat. So we have options as a city council by state statute on how we could fill that seat. So I'm going to ask Mr. Rosso if you would educate not just the council, because I think we probably all know it, but if you would share it with our residents, and then we'll, councilmembers, I'll give you an opportunity to weigh in on what your preference and pleasure is. Mr. Rosso.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Minnesota statutes specifically address what happens when there's a vacancy of any type in a council, whether it's by election or resignation or otherwise. And first, in case of a vacancy, the vacancy, the statute says, shall be filled by the council appointment until an election is subsequently held as further provided in the subdivision. And so that's the first thing, the council fills the vacancy. Second, in the case of a tie vote, so the statute was anticipating that normally councils are odd-numbered bodies, that in case, and when you lose one member, you don't have an odd-numbered body. So the statute says, in case of a tie vote in the council, the mayor shall make the appointment. So the statute is very clear on that. There are a couple of options in the statute dealing with when the vacancy occurs and whether a special election has to be held at a date before the next general election or with the next general election. Generally, cities choose to do it with the next general election. In this case, because the unremain, the time that remains on Mr. Case's council term is now, at this moment, less than two years, you have the option to appoint and let that person fill out the remainder of the term. You do not have to hold a special election at any point. You could decide to do that, but you can, you have the requirement to fill the vacancy and could decide at a later date whether you wanted to do an election. Most cities would not do that.
Thank you. Any questions before I open it up to hear what you all would like to have happen? Any questions of Mr. Rosso? So let me throw it out to each of you, if you would be willing to, I'd love to hear from each one of you, what your pleasure would be, what your preference would be to fill this council vacancy. Maybe I'll just start on my left and go down, is that?
Sure.
Councilmember Aho.
So I think, you know, in this case, it's, every election is a little bit different, but in this case, we had two other individuals who both ran for city council, and we have one individual that was very close to achieving success as well, and so was very close. And so I think it makes it, it makes it a pretty natural choice for us as a council. It's not, it's not the only choice we have, but I think in terms of precedence and other things, it makes it a pretty easy selection. And I think, I think that individual would do a fine job as a city council member. So my preference would be that we take PG Norrion and appoint him for the, to serve the remainder of your term.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
I have to agree. The second and third was very close, both were great candidates, and I also think it's a very easy vote to go to the third, PG Norrion, to fill the seat.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Freiberg.
I also would be okay as far as appointing PG Norrion. Ran very hard against him for 18 months. I think we have a strong mutual respect for one another. The election was close, there's no doubt about it. And I think we would work well together.
Great, I have a couple of comments myself. Did you want to speak again before I speak?
No, go ahead and speak, but then I'd like to make a motion.
Great, thank you. What I'm going to say is not obviously to lobby or convince, because I'm going to agree with all of you, but I did want to share a few things for the benefit of the public. Number one, because it's less than two years, if we did choose to run an election, we would have to pass a special ordinance and explain why we were doing that. That would slow down the process that we could not seat someone for three months, so that's a factor. This city council, I've been part of the city council as Nancy Tyrell-Lukens was twice, where we replaced an open vacancy, and we did it both times by appointment. We did different processes of appointment, but both times were by appointment, so we do have precedent with that. The cost of an election would be about $30,000. Other cities, I believe, right now around us, there are three cities with dealing, going through dealing with vacancies, am I correct in that?
School boards and city councils.
And they're all doing appointments. We also have the Eden Prairie School Board that went through a vacancy and did an appointment. So the precedent and I think the community's sense of support, I am feeling, is behind the concept of appointment. It is possible, we could have had an election where we had candidates that we believed, as your representatives, would not be the best representatives for you. Fortunately, this time, we have in third place a candidate that I think was a stellar candidate, and not only brings tremendous business expertise, former chief technology officer of the ADC Corporation, but also ran a campaign that came within 300 votes of second place, so validated his stance in the community. He happens, which I think is valuable, in a community that is today 25% diverse. He happens to represent a segment of the population that is diverse. He would be only the second council member of diversity to ever be on the Eden Prairie City Council in the history of Eden Prairie. So I think it's more than appropriate, and I'm just super proud to be able to vote for PG Norrion. And I worked a long time on the name, Norrion. Twirl the R a bit, Norrion. Am I doing it right for anybody? I hope so. Am I PG, am I close? Oh, okay, thank you. I did work at it. So Kathy, you had, you have your light on, and I would love to entertain a motion. Unless, is there any other comments at all? I don't want to cut any, we can make the motion and have more conversation as well, but Kathy, if you'd like to make a motion.
I'd like to move to appoint PG Norrion to fill the remaining, the vacancy created by the election of Ron Case as mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion?
Little bit of things. I'd like to point out that he was chair of our Human Rights Commission at one point, so he has a long history with the city. He's currently chair of the Eden Prairie Community Foundation, for he's well, very well-versed in the whole community. And he also ran a very good race and had a very close amount of numbers, so he's respected by the community as well. And I think that makes him, as we've all discussed, an excellent candidate.
I agree. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? PG, welcome.
Congratulations.
So as I discussed, more for formality and process, we will have him sworn in on Tuesday, January 22nd, so you can all come back. These are exciting, aren't they? I mean, they're kind of okay, right? I know you can watch them on TV at home. But he'll be sworn in on Tuesday, January 22nd, and at that time, then we as a full council will decide future committee and board appointments and the such. All right, we have just one more item on our schedule tonight, and maybe two more, actually, yep. And so, Mr. Getcho, if you want to address the board and commission recruitment process.
I do, thank you, Mayor, council. My items can be pretty quick, every year and each and every year, and this is something you alluded to when we talked about during Councilmember Freiberg's report that we have. Aside from the Board of Appeal and Equalization, we have six other city commissions by city code, and we are beginning our process right now for recruitment for those commissions. Obviously, we have many people on those commissions that terms are not up, so there are always at least one or two, and sometimes three, people whose terms are up, and many of them do reapply, but there always are new openings. And we do have people that need to resign if they're moving out of town or something happens, so we have a few openings in that regard as well. But it is the, you know, it's a huge part of our community engagement and advisory to the city council and the city staff on just a number of issues. So we are beginning our recruitment for our Heritage Preservation Commission, our Planning Commission, our Parks and Recreation Commission, our Conservation Commission, our Human Rights and Diversity Commission, and the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission, starting basically after this meeting and into next week, and we will be seeking applications until February 4th, that would be the deadline. And then all the candidates, and this isn't the case in every community, every candidate for a commission interviews with the full city council. So that would take place at the, on February 26th. So you'll have, council of three meetings in February, the fourth Tuesday, you will be interviewing commission members, that would then be considered for appointment at the first meeting in March. And they then would begin their terms following an orientation in April. And we've just been lucky, knock on wood, that for probably the last five years, we've received more applications than we had room for. In fact, council may remember, we've actually increased the size of our commissions from five members to seven members to nine members. We had to update code to do that, but we were willing to do that. So we've had people that have been willing to step up, but we do need that to continue as some people do move on and not stay on the commission. So that process begins now, and we're excited to get that going for the coming year. So with that, Mayor and council, the request is simply that you approve the timeline for recruitment of our board and commission candidates for 2019.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve the attached timeline for recruitment of board and commission candidates and set February 26, 2019, as the date for commission interviews.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have one last item on the agenda tonight with Mr. Lauthammer on professional service agreement with the artist CJ Wrench of CJR Design for the Preserve Boulevard Public Art. Sorry, that's hard when to get out, or at least say 10 times fast, please.
Your honor, council members, several years ago, the council had asked us to continue to look at providing public art opportunities within the community. This is another way to do that, and as part of the Preserve Boulevard project, funds were budgeted in order to help us attain that. And so tonight, I want to walk you through the process of how we came to be recommending this particular art and artist, and answer any questions and show you certainly what they would look like. I have usually been a very literal thinker, and so I'm probably the last person to then ask you to suspend some literal thinking and look at this as a little more conceptual tonight. And I'm going to show you several slides, as well as some examples, that hopefully give you a good idea what this is going to look like, enough so that if we are moving forward with it, when it gets put in place, that it looks close to this. But until that actually happens, we need to kind of have that conceptual feeling about it. So the way we went about this is similar to how we have gone about securing artists for other public art projects within the city. We put out an RFQ, a Request for Qualifications. With that, we received 70 applications from artists. And with that, we came up with a committee. This is primarily a road project with some of the public art for beautification purposes. So Mr. Ellis, myself, city engineer, city engineer, project manager on this, Beth Novak Krebs from planning, and also Jess Schramm, our arts and events supervisor was a part of this, and she actually drove the recruitment for the artists. From there, it was actually fairly easy of a process to narrow down to four artists. We then asked those artists, and we gave them a small stipend to move forward with giving more of a detailed look at what they would do. And so we had that, that occurred in October, and that brought us to the point where we could make some recommendations. Just going to set these in a spot where you can see them. So these were provided to us by Mr. Wrench, and there are several more of these that are in our offices in the Parks and Recreation Department. We've had them, since we received them, we've had them sitting in the window, so you get an idea of what the natural sunlight does. As we move forward, we have total capability of picking the colors that we think would be most appropriate to happen. I'm going to move forward with a few slides, but to first introduce you to the artist, this is somebody who has done work all over the country and has some great examples that we can look at, and some references that we were able to check to say, this really is someone that can produce some good quality work. Here are some examples towards the bottom of the slide that he has done and completed all over the country again. Just want to orientate you where we're thinking that these could be placed. So this is Preserve Boulevard. To the far left is Anderson Lakes Parkway, and as you head to the right, you're heading up towards the mall. At Anderson Lakes Parkway and Preserve, there is going to be a pond, or a storm pond, where you see that small circle, kind of at the Y of Anderson Lakes and Preserve. We think a large sculpture of these types of grasses, and I'll show you more detail, would be a good location at that spot. We also think for symmetry, on the very far right, and it's kind of a little bit of an orange location up there, that that would also be a good spot for another fairly large concept of the sculptures. Then, as you go down Preserve Boulevard, there are three or four other green dots or lines in there. They represent medians and some areas where two others could be dropped in, and there would be enough room for them to be placed. So just kind of keep that in mind as we show you what these things would look like. So conceptually, we would play off from some of the native vegetation that's here in the community. And you're seeing, in what he terms are maquettes, which I have up in front of you, you're seeing what some of those top leaves would look like. These are anywhere, these sculptures are anywhere from 15 to about 25 feet tall. They had to meet requirements so that they don't get in the way of snowplows. I'll show you some examples of how they sit in the median and are actually lit so that they are there at night. They need to be hardy, so the types of material that they're made out of are strong and weatherproof considering our climate. So an example is using the side oats gamma. Again, it's not literal, it's a rendering or a rendition of what that would look like. And this is a kind of a concept of how it would sit in a median. I should tell you, though, that the base, it seems like the base is about six inches there. What we're suggesting is we actually bring that base up to about three, three and a half feet in order to be protective of those grasses, you know? Snow's going to get pushed on there, other things, so it would be brought up, and the lights would still come from the bottom, so both the sunlight and then also the lights at night would be a part of it. So another example is the blue joint is another look that we could select from. This is what that would look like, more in a median, in kind of real life. This is River Bull Rush. Again, we have the choices of colors. Here's one that's a little more muted and a little more of maybe towards a fall color. Here it is in a median. This is Indian grass, and again, if we were being literal, it wouldn't be blue, although blue is not necessarily a color that we would be recommending. As we've looked at the potential colors, we're really recommending more of an earth tone, separate colors, so that there is a variety, but a little more muted than some of the brighter colors that we could select from. So your motion tonight would be to approve the contract. The motion that you have in front of you doesn't include the last line or two that I have up on the screen, which is dependent upon some of the contract agreements, including the bonds and insurance. We haven't secured that from the artist at this point, and so we would want all of those signed before we would actually execute a contract. signed before we would actually execute a contract in full force with the artist. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or take any feedback.
Yeah, I'll let you all speak first. So I think Kathy Nelson was first, and if you want to go second. Councilmember Nelson.
We're only doing, doing four of these six, correct?
Yes, and the concept would be is the ones at the two ends would be larger and a little more pronounced than the two that are kind of intermittently spaced along Preserve.
Now, have those four out of these six been decided or not?
The four types that I showed you here tonight were the ones, he showed us, I believe we looked at eight different potentials.
There's six on our material.
Those four, we have, we have talked about and decided.
Okay, so you're not talking about doing the, the reddish ones or the yellowish ones?
Correct. And also that style of grass or plant, too.
Okay, so that's, that's done at this point. We don't get to say, gee, I really would prefer one of the others.
No, certainly. You know, as we walked through with the committee and said, what makes sense? We also should tell you, we vetted this with our natural resources experts, too, because even though none of these are buckthorn or other invasives, we want to make sure that we don't put something in that might be teetering on that or may not grow well. We still want it to be, even though it's representative, we want it to be representative of, of what we have in the community so that it can be interpreted and also not just for looks, but also to make people aware of some of those other grasses that are out there that they might plant in their own, own yard. But yeah, if you have strong feelings or recommendations, we're certainly willing.
The one has all those little feelers going off of it, and I was wondering how that would actually work. I'm not sure what it's called, it's sort of a green in the top center.
Is it the River Bull Rush?
No, not that one, not that one, that one.
Blue joint.
See, it's got all those little wispy things coming off of them.
Mm-hmm.
And I had wondered how those might weather.
Yeah, we have that in our office and actually have that same concern about the spindles at the end, not just how it will weather, but they are, they are fairly spindly.
And I was wondering if one of the other choices would consequently be better, or if you're looking at changing that one? Because I did have a definite concern about safety on that particular one, and if that's one of the ones you've picked, I'd ask how we're getting that to a safe point.
Those were some of the same questions I had in terms of, you know, which, which locations, how many are we gonna do, what, what is included in that $130,000? So one of the other things I was just gonna comment on, is there any way, so if you look, turn right around and look right behind you, there's our logo there. I mean, we've got some kind of grasses in there, is there any way of kind of replicating that so it kind of sticks within our, all of our branding that we've already established, you know, and, and not for all of them, but maybe at least for, for one of them?
Yeah, like the yellow one.
Yeah, that, that's something that we did not ask them to, to actually do, but it is something that we could take a look at. Is there a concept that could include more of the, of the blue stem kind of grass? Yeah.
And so, and so in that $130,000, then, what all is included exactly?
So the two large at each end.
Yep.
Two down the center. It's also all of their structural work that needs to take place, it's the lighting, and also the concept design, too. You have the artist, then you have the fabrication, and then you have the install. So this is all.
All, all in?
All in, yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You know, it's funny, as you both were speaking, it, it gets back to artists so hard because it's so subjective and it's art to one person and what is this, whatever to someone else. I, the only, so, the only thing I would add, and I think it complements what both of you said, is that to make this make sense with our prairie, I don't think it has to look like anything else, because that was kind of just chosen, but I do think, and I, I think you've made an attempt at that, but I do think it should represent plants that were here in Eden Prairie pre-1852. And, and I think that's so doable, and at that point, as long as they're beautiful, I mean, I don't really care exactly what they look like, as long as they make sense. So if somebody says, what is this? They represent plants that are the prairie that were here in Eden Prairie before settler settlement. I just want to say something else caveated to our residents, that public art was one of the really big pieces of Nancy Tyra-Lukens' legacy, and she was an advocate for it consistently for 24, well, the 20 years she was on. And we, as a council, felt that this area coming up in, coming north, I always get mixed up on directions there, but coming towards the mall is really a central key gateway to the mall. I mean, the entire Preserve, right? And even south of that empties into the mall there, right? It's, it's a big deal. And so for us to dress up our entry point way into the major center area is significant. I think that's what we were thinking. This isn't just a road project and let's throw some public art in. It, it really had strategic significance to us. So I, I'm very pleased, I think you're on the right track. I don't know how micromanaging involved we want to get. I think we should get involved and represent our opinions. At the end of the day, there's gonna be five of us with five perceptions of what art is. But I, I do like the idea of it meaning something and telling a story and having historical connections and really connections to that in the sense of prairie, et cetera. Anything else anyone want? We're still at, we're approving the contract, but we're at the still flexible stage of, of tweaking.
Correct.
Yep. You are.
And I just want to add to that, I think, you know, the, the new, the new monument sign, the entry sign into Eden Prairie on 494, looks, looks really nice, and especially at night when you drive there and you see the, the lights on it and the birds lit up, I think it looks, it looks pretty, pretty special.
I, I like it, too. And you were, I guess if you don't like it, you can, you can talk to Brad, but if you'd like it, you can talk to him as well. He and Councilmember Sherry Butcher-Wickstrom were the two council members that were on the committee that really worked hard at the design of all of our entry monuments, and eventually we're going to have, what, five to six? We're not sure, it's flexible in there, but we want to have, when people come in Eden Prairie, we want people to know they're coming into Eden Prairie. And I think this kind of public art is, will really enhance our community. So unless there's further conversation, I'll entertain a motion on this. Any of you can speak on this if you want.
I've made all of them, all of them, so you guys, you guys take this one.
Move to approve the professional services agreement for $130,000 with CJ Wrench for CJR Design for the Preserve Boulevard par, public art, art design fabrication and installation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Your honor, if we could add the language just at the end that I've now put on the screen that says, subject to submission of all contract required documents.
Subject to the fabrication and, subject to submission of all contract required documents, including bonds and insurance certificates.
A little attorney in your background with subdication and all that there, I think, if that's a word.
I'll, I'll still second it.
Any conversation, discussion on that? amended motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Nice work, thank you, Mr. Lauthammer. That concludes, is there anything else to bring before the council this evening?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask you not to leave right afterwards so I can get the certificate signed.
Absolutely. The three, yes.
Well, I need two witnesses and three.
Got it. Nobody leave.
If you'd all.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn the city council meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn city council meeting.
Nice job. Is there a?
Second.
Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? This meeting is adjourned.[1765.91][1765.91][applause] Thank you so much for being part of this this evening.[1769.54][1769.54][applause]